Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's regular board meeting of the Independent School Board of School District 279. Then today's date is Tuesday, October 24th, 2017, and the time is 6:07 PM. Seated from my left to my right is Director Stephanie Fortner, Director Michael Stoffi, myself, Bob Gerhart, Director Jim Burgett, Director Jessica Craig, and Superintendent Schools Kate McGuire. Director Douglas is unable to be with us tonight. Would you all please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board members in front of you, is the agenda as it's been printed? Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, I move to accept the agenda as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Director Fortner. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, the agenda is accepted. First up on our agenda for tonight is a parking fee hearing and public comment. Tim Paul-Matier.
Chair Gerhart, Board, and Superintendent McGuire. I'm here before you today on a hearing on a proposal to establish parking fees at the three comprehensive high schools. This summer, it came to the attention of the Board that parking fees amongst the three comprehensive high schools, Park Center, Osseo, and Maple Grove, varied amongst the buildings. And District Administration was asked to examine the variability in the fees between the three high schools. Based upon our discussion with High School Building Administration, it was determined to eliminate variability in the fees set by the three high schools. Maple Grove had set their parking fee at $50 per trimester. Osseo Senior High had set theirs at $45 per trimester. And Park Center had set theirs at $45 per trimester, and also offered an early bird special, which was not really utilized by many of the students, is my understanding. Minnesota law affords a school board the right to establish fees in the areas that are considered extracurricular, noncurricular, or supplementary to the requirements for successful completion of an educational program. These type of fees for parking fees would fall under that particular provision. However, before initiation of a specific fee, which is neither authorized nor prohibited by state law, the school district is required to hold a public hearing based upon three weeks' notice. In this instance, the district notified the public of the present hearing through the district website, the comprehensive high school websites, social media, and 279 Connect, the district's e-newsletter for families. Persons interested in sharing their perspectives were invited to respond by emailing the district through We Listen and Perspectives, and they were also invited to attend tonight's meeting. Perspectives were also shared via the district's social media website on Facebook. Based on our discussions with the administration of the buildings, right now, the recommendation is, in order to ensure consistency among the three comprehensive high schools, the administration is proposing a uniform fee of $45 per trimester for all schools, and that for subsequent school years, high school administrators will set a reasonable uniform fee that will apply across all three comprehensive high schools. We did receive some public comment on We Listen. We specifically received two comments. One comment was from a student at Park Center Senior High, who expressed an opinion that parking fees should be lowered at, or should be at no cost to all students. The second commentator on We Listen stated that the established fee is, quote, "best left to each site to determine the amount of the fee that best fits the economic makeup of the student body and their families." And the same commentator inquired about why the district ALC was not included in the action to establish uniform fee. In addition, we did receive some comments on Facebook. Several commentators on Facebook were sharing the parking fees that have been established at other area high schools. One commentator noted concern about her son being unable to get a permit, because all the permits had been issued, and she was requesting that additional spots be established. Another commentator suggested that the district estimate the cost for redoing all three lots at once, including cameras, lighting, security, and everything else, and then adding additional 25% of the cost and charging students a flat rate for the life of the lots to pay for these costs. One commentator inquired about how the collected fees are utilized, or I should say, actually, a few commentators actually inquired about that. One commentator stated her belief that the fee was too steep in light of other fees that parents are required to pay. So, at this time, to the extent there are any members that are here today to address the issue of a parking fee, we would ask that members who are interested in this particular topic, concerning specifically the proposal to set a uniform parking fee with the three comprehensive high schools, the comments should be, here should only be limited to uniform parking fees at the three comprehensive high schools. Comments should not exceed three minutes.
With that, is there any public comment on the hearing? Regarding the parking fees, this is what the current hearing is about. I would ask that the audience members please return to your seats. This is an orderly meeting that's being held for the purpose of the public, and you're keeping the public from having their business conducted. I'm asking you a second time, please return to your seats, so we can get about the business of the people. I'll ask for a third time. With that, I would make a motion that we recess this meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
This meeting is recessed until such time that order can be restored in the meeting room. All right, now that order has been reestablished, we can get back to doing the people's business. Where we left off is we were in the middle of our hearing about parking fees. Tim Paul-Matier?
Yes, Chair Gerhart, once again, we denied any public comment on the proposal with respect to parking fee permits.
Is there any action that we need to take as a board tonight?
The resolution in connection with the proposal to establish the parking fees is actually located later in the agenda.
Okay. So is there any public comment on the parking fees? It looks like there's none.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next up on our agenda for tonight is our audience opportunity to address the school board. You know, I know that some people have had some comments about what I'm about to read to you, but I want to remind you that 99% of this is procedure that we've had in place since long before any of us were on the board. Nothing's changed. It's just been abbreviated for a number of years, and it's not been serving us appropriately. And so, I will read this off. Please listen and be prepared to understand what's here. "In the interest of community engagement, the Osseo School Board provides an opportunity for members of the audience to address the board as follows. Anyone who wishes to address the board must complete a speaker card and submit it to the school board chair prior to the start of the meeting." Speaker cards available, public information table, by the meeting handouts. Once the audience opportunity to address the school board has begun, no additional cards will be accepted. Will the audience members please return to their seats, so we can get about doing the people's business? Ironically, your blue tape is keeping the public from actually speaking, so you're the ones keeping people from actually having anything to say. Would you please return to your seats and return order to this room? Would you please return to your seats, so we can get about doing the people's business? With that, I make a motion to recess once again. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? And with that, we are recessed once again. All right, let's get back to business. The board chair or designate will call on each speaker who has submitted a speaker card, first calling on those addressing an item included on the current agenda, followed by those addressing topics not on the current agenda. Speakers will be called in the following order: students, parents/guardians of students, district employees, district residents, and all others. When called upon, please state your name and topic. All remarks should be addressed to the board as a whole, not to any specific members or to any person who is not a member of the board. If more than three individuals have organized to speak on the same topic, please designate a spokesperson who can summarize the issue. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Longer time may be granted at the discretion of the board chair. During this agenda item, normally not to exceed 20 minutes, subject to the discretion of the chair, the board administration will listen to comments, ask clarifying questions if needed, and respond when appropriate. The board chair may delegate responsibility to the superintendent or the superintendents designate to follow up with the speaker within a few days following the meeting. Comments and interactions between the board members and public are expected to be respectful, courteous, professional, and civil. The board chair will be responsible for ensuring that interaction meets these standards and will disallow inappropriate interaction. In particular, speakers may not address criticism towards an individual district employee. Such concerns should be directed privately to the employee supervisor or higher-level administrator. Personnel concerns should be directed to individuals in the following order: building principal, executive director for human resources, assistant superintendent, superintendent, and finally, in writing to the school board. And with that, we'll bring up our first speaker for the night. And despite some of the controversy about some of the non-changes that we made to our policy, this is one of the reasons why we asked for the cards to be printed out. So I will apologize in advance if I don't get the name pronounced right. Nalima Munene? Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Osseo School Board. My name is Nalima Sitati Munene. I am a parent in District 279. I am also a resident of Brooklyn Park. I am here tonight to speak from my personal experience, you know, as a parent, and the reason why myself and others are here tonight is to speak about this issue of representation and to get some clarity. As has been stated before, through various communication to the school board, we would like to have the subject of how the district is represented in the school board be addressed. As parents and constituents of this district, we feel that we have a right to bring up this issue, and we would like the board to address it, or at least to communicate with us how they intend to address it. We'd also like some clarity about how we are able to get issues on the board's agenda. Not just in regard to this issue, but there are a ton of other issues that we would also like to address. I would also like to address some of the false information that has been going around in regards to this issue. We're not here just to simply advocate for preferential treatment for people of color, but yes, we're here to push an equity agenda, because it is imperative. Equity is ensuring that everybody has everything that they need in order to be successful. When I look at our mission, it states that our mission is to inspire and to prepare all students with confidence, courage, and competence to achieve their dreams. As a parent, I'm here to tell you that the outcomes of this school district are skewed. And yes, this is a racial issue, because the disparities are along racial lines. And we are not afraid to say that. If the disparities were along any other lines, we would say that. But the disparities are clearly along racial lines, and you have the data to show it, and it has been consistent over a number of years. So we are here to say that we need this issue to be addressed, and we'd like some clarity about how that issue is going to be addressed. The other concern I would like to raise is about the communication that has been going around, I think from District 36 of the Republican Party, claiming that they are here to defend the people that they elected. That is concerning to me, because as a constituent and as a parent, I feel that the school district is answerable to us, as constituents, and not to any specific party. So I would like to raise that, I would like to raise that as a concern. And tonight, we would like some clarity about how this is going to be further communicated, and how we push, and how we continue to address this issue and to discuss this issue. We want our children to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for filling out the card, because that helps us get in touch with you to follow up. Next up, our next speaker is Denise Butler. Is Denise here, or is she in the over... Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Denise Butler. Twenty-two-year Brooklyn Park resident, current mother of a third-year-old that attends Weaver Lake Elementary. So, the reason why we're here tonight, it really hits home for me. It really, really impacted me and moved me to take notice of what is currently happening right now when it comes to our children and the education that they are receiving. My daughter came to me, home to me one day, and she said, "Mommy, are there not any parents or teachers of color in this world?" And I just sat back and I said, "Wow, I don't realize the trauma that I'm probably impacting her with by having her to show up in an environment where she does not see equal representation of staff, and then also to look at the board where it does not have equal representation." So I'm here as a mother for my daughter, Saisha, to speak on her behalf, because right now, she's not in the position to speak to this board, because she'd probably have a lot more to say as well, that we should have equal representation. Studies shows that when students of color see people that look like them in the environment in which they are getting an education, they do a lot better. And so it's going to start with this board, to be more diverse, to represent all the views and opinions of all cultures and all walks of life, all economic status, all class status. And that is why we're asking this board to put it on the agenda, open this up for discussion, and see what can we do to make sure that all the students are doing well, and not just some of the students are doing well. You keep track of this data. You know how students of color fare in comparison to their white counterparts. You just created a racial equity agenda. Follow through with that agenda, support that agenda by putting something like this on the school board agenda and addressing this and having this discussion to happen. I look forward to getting direct answers from the school board tonight and further-up discussions. Let us know when this is going to happen, so we can be here and more parents can be here. I also want to address the barriers. There are so many barriers in coming to this meeting tonight. So many barriers were put up in me being able to participate in this meeting tonight. I believe this is a public forum where democracy exists, but when it comes to being a part and participating at this forum, there are too many barriers, and those needs to be addressed as well. And I'm just going to talk about it. Race, we don't want to address race. We hide from talking about race. This school district needs to talk about race. These cities need to talk about race. This state needs to address race. And as a school board member, if you say that race is not an issue, then you're ignorant to the facts and the matters of this school district that you're supposed to represent and your constituents that you're supposed to represent. We need to take the time to talk about race, because it is at the forefront of all the systemic issues and concerns and barriers that are happening right now in our community.
Thank you. And in anticipation of that topic coming up, I would like to give our administration an opportunity to speak a few words about the efforts that we are already undertaking to remedy the problems that you're talking about. So I don't know if Judy, if you would like to speak to some of the things we're doing in HR to try to remedy these issues, or if Dr. McGuire would like to speak to this effect? Judy, please, go ahead.
Is our mic on?
Yeah, mic. You're not...
Is my mic on?
Yeah, now it is.
There you go.
Are we good to go?
Yep.
Okay. So over the last five years, our board has declared as one of our annual priority items of work in our strategic plan is to build a workforce that more closely mirrors the demographics of our student population. And each year, our priority work team is reported back to the school board on our progress in that priority work. The first phase of, in 2013, was to develop a recruitment and retention plan that contained five main components: expanding our recruitment efforts with a focus on specific strategies for recruiting applicants of color, analyzing our application screening and selection processes in order to maximize opportunities to hire staff of color, developing a metric system designed to measure progress and return on investment, and developing a grow-your-own initiative, and, excuse me, and number five, building a comprehensive employee retention program. Some of the highlights over the last years include, but are not limited to, the board authorizing funding to support a recruitment and retention position in human resources dedicated to achieving goals contained within our recruitment and retention plan. We've implemented expanded and strategic advertising and recruitment through social media, diversity job fairs, newspapers, and radio, modified our employment application to ensure the process is clear and concise. We've partnered with Metro State University's Urban Educator Program to assist us with our Grow Your Own program. We've created a Career Path framework where a student in the district who's interested in pursuing a teaching career can secure employment in an instructional support position with our district while they're attending college. They can receive paid time off for student teaching in the district, priority consideration for hiring into our teaching positions, and additional seniority once they have completed their probationary period as a teacher. The result of our work is showing significant progress in our administrative employee groups and in our support staff/employee groups. In both of these groups, the percentage of employees of color has increased substantially. Over the last five years, our percentage of administrators has increased from 0% in 2013 to 26% in 2017. And the percentage of our support staff of color has increased from 14% in 2013 to 36% in 2017. Finally, as far as our teaching staff goes, we have not been able to increase the percentage of staff of color in our workforce, and the biggest challenge is that there are not enough teaching applicants of color in our pipeline.
Ninety teachers.
That is why, that is why we have created our own Grow Your Own program, supported by our Career Path framework.
Thank you, Judy. One other thing I'd like to address just briefly, and I'm going to go, I'm going to take a risk on this one. This is a topic that I've been uncomfortable with bringing forward, but it's just, I think it's time that we have enough people in this room, and we have a forum here that this needs to be brought out, is I keep hearing this concept that this board doesn't represent everyone in the district. How it's, order please, how this board is, as one person crudely put it, "a bunch of white guys from Maple Grove." And the person clapping, I think, is the one who posted that. The thing is that that person is incorrect.
Did it post it?
Where do you live?
Did it post it?
We have, as far as where people live, that is correct. Five people live in Maple Grove, one lives in Osseo. One of these board members is minority. Three of our board members have mixed-race families, so the idea to insinuate that this board would do anything racist... Have family that are mixed-race, children that are mixed-race. To insinuate that we would do anything to harm anyone of a minority status is, quite frankly, racist and offensive in and of itself, because we would be harming our own children, and that's just plain bizarre. We wouldn't do that. So to accuse us of doing such a thing is just a patently false lie. This is not a discussion. Thank you very much. Our next speaker for the night is David Peterson.
And he forced the resignation of the most equity-driven superintendent.
We have not forced a resignation of our superintendent. This is not a discussion. This room will come to order, please, or we'll end up recessing once again. I'm not going to tolerate this being a forum to have lies and misinformation spread about this board or this district. What you're saying is false. Please.
Mr. Chair, permission to read from time to time from a written document?
Go ahead, please.
So, my comments are less directed towards the board and more directed towards everybody here, because you're the people who pay the board's salary, who voted for these people, and they're supposed to represent us. So my comments are more towards all of you. I wanted to speak a little bit about the board's public presentation. And I think the first piece is even to have the board chair editorializing in this meeting is inappropriate, and then shutting down further conversation about it is also inappropriate. I also want to take a second to read something that I found on Facebook from board member Jessica Craig.
Excuse me.
I'm going to start a new social media campaign...
Excuse me, commentary will not be directed to individuals.
This is not directed towards an individual on the board. This...
It is addressed, the content of your comments are directed to an individual on the board. Will you please... You can share it publicly. This is not a forum for you to break our policies and our protocols.
So, Mr. Chair, this is not a violation of the policy. I'm not direct...
This is not a discussion. Please, please exit the podium. Please exit the podium. Please exit the podium.
This, this is not an editorial comment towards a member of the board. This is, in her own words, something that she says...
Are you directing a comment about a particular individual member?
I'm going to start a new social media campaign called "Just Stop."
I would like to make a motion to recess. All those in favor, this is a second.
Literally, everyone has been a victim of something at some point, so can we just stop with the...
And we're back. Our next speaker for tonight is Steve Jaeger. Steve Jaeger. Well, I believe in all tonight's disruptions, we've lost a speaker who's been denied his opportunity to be able to address the public. Our next speaker for the night is Gina Keenan.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Gina Keenan, and I am a teacher at Fair Oaks Elementary. I'm also a taxpayer and a resident of Brooklyn Park. In addition to that, I am one of the elementary vice presidents for Education Minnesota Osseo. Today, I would just like to share with you the story of Fair Oaks. And I want you to think of Fair Oaks as you're making decisions for the district, and I just want you to consider some of the amazing culture and community that we have at our site.
There we go.
I'm sorry. Oh, there we go, okay. So I just wanted to start with some of our school's demographics. So, we have 461 students enrolled at Fair Oaks. Forty-four percent of those students receive EL services, and over 95% receive free and reduced lunch. The largest group of students at Fair Oaks, as you can see, is our Hispanic, Spanish-speaking group. Then, that is at 36.1%. Thirty-two point four percent of our students are black. Twenty-five point three percent are Asian. Five point two percent of our students are white, and 1.1 are American Indian. So I just want you to consider that as you watch the video. So, instead of just talking about Fair Oaks, we prepared just a short video to show you some of the awesome things that are going on in our school.
It was unmute.
One of the great things we do at Fair Oaks is build relationships. We believe that the relationships we develop together are essential to both our academic, social, and emotional success. All students experience a community circle daily, are taught self-regulation strategies, and repair the mistakes they make.
Students' individual needs are also met using trauma-informed practices, restorative, and calm practices. Students have scheduled motor breaks in the green room and yoga calm in the classroom to have calm bodies. We also have many fitness and nutrition programs, which provide ways to keep our bodies healthy like girls on the run, feel up to play 60, and healthy snack options two days a week.
Another great thing at Fair Oaks is our technology. Teachers use technology to enhance instruction and increase student achievement. Fourth and fifth graders use their one-to-one iPads to learn independently, so teachers can give individualized support to students. All our Fair Oaks classrooms have devices like iPads, Chromebooks, and laptops for students to practice and apply their learning in engaging ways. and laptops for students to practice and apply their learning in engaging ways.
Our awesome teachers have also written grants to get a variety of other technology, like robots which allow our students to run coding. In addition, we have a morning news studio called China Fucking Morning News which provides fifth graders the opportunity to practice real-life jobs such as creating and producing the news.
One more thing we'd like to tell you about is our amazing ESPs. At Fair Oaks, we have over thirty highly-qualified educational support professionals. Our ESPs receive much of the same training as their licensed teachers in instructional strategies, restorative practices, and technology. Some of our ESPs even travel nationwide to train other educators. They are an important part of our education. These are just a few of the great things happening at Fair Oaks. If you'd like to learn more, please, come and visit our school.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tanya Simons. Welcome.
Good evening, school board members and ISD Two Seventy-Nine community members. My name's Tanya Simons, and I've lived in Brooklyn Park for fifteen years, and I'm the mother of two small children. I first became aware of a group of Brooklyn Park residents partnering with activists outside of our community to change our school board election process when NPR published their article on October fourth. I became very concerned about this issue when I read their racially-charged accusations, both in public and social media forums, and saw their claim that they speak for Brooklyn Park. As I researched their claims and demands and spoke to my neighbors across the racial spectrum, I realized that the claims made by the group are not only inflammatory and divisive and frankly bigoted in accusing members of the school board that simply because they're white, they can't represent Brooklyn Park. I also found them to be false. Those pushing for a change to the current at-large system claims that Brooklyn Park didn't have a voice. I personally pulled the 2016 election results, being somebody who's data by nature and background, and I have them here with me tonight, and I reviewed them. And when I looked at the top three vote-getters, two of the top three in Brooklyn Park are actually on this school board. We have a strong voice. We had a voice, and it's represented on the school board today. Now, a small group of activists in Brooklyn Park, they don't want to represent our voice. They want to overturn our voice. They don't want to enhance our voice. They don't like who we voted, and so they want to restrict us to voting for who they think that we should vote for as a community. In addition, as I spoke with parents, in my neighborhood in particular, I found that just in my immediate area, we have kids that attend Brooklyn Park. We have kids that attend Osseo, and we have kids that attend Maple Grove. So we value this at-large system because our kids don't attend just Brooklyn Park schools. They attend everywhere, and that's the nature of the district. That's what we love about the district, that we get to have that choice. And so we believe that our votes need to follow that choice across the district. There's no guarantee that if we elected somebody from Brooklyn Park that they would represent just Brooklyn Park schools because our kids don't go to Brooklyn Park schools exclusively. We need voters who, we need elected representatives who are running from all across the district. And we deserve the choice to vote for each of those seats and pick the person and the candidate that we think is best suited for the position. Last, I'd be remiss if I didn't address the equity claims and demands of the activists here. As a person of Mexican descent with racial, with biracial children, I do get engaged when race of my kids come up, and they're used as a political bargaining chip. Equity policies that this group is advancing are the same divisive, ill-informed policies that have negatively impacted Minneapolis schools and Edina as recently written about in the Star Tribune. We have kids leaving Minneapolis to come to our district because of the quality of education here. As parents in ISD Two Seventy-Nine, our children deserve the highest standards. We want standards that raise all of our kids up because our kids are capable. My kids are capable. My neighbor's kids are capable. Not because of their race, but because we're all human beings. Yes, there is a gap, and we need evidence-based solutions to address performance gaps for all of our children. Activists are creating division in my community.
Discretion of the chair.
And I'm here to say, "Stop." These activists don't represent me. They don't represent Brooklyn Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Order, please. With that, we have gone far past our twenty-minute guideline for public comments, so we will move on with the rest of our agenda and get the people's business done for the night. Next up is our superintendent's report, Dr. Kate McGuire.
Mr. Chair, a regular part of the superintendent's report is to share points of pride. Points of pride celebrate students, staff, and community members who are contributing to the accomplishment of our mission, which is to inspire and prepare all students with the confidence, courage, and competence to achieve their dreams, contribute to community, and engage in a lifetime of learning. And I've asked cabinet members to share those points of pride tonight.
In the category of achieving dreams, Lieutenant Robert Coder, a 2007 graduate of Park Center Senior High, participated on a flyover to mark the opening of the X Games in Minneapolis this summer. On his way there, Coder, who was a pilot in the U.S. Navy, took this bird's-eye-view photo of his alma mater. Zoe Adkins, a varsity tennis player for the Maple Grove Crimson, captured the Section Five AA Girls Singles Tennis Championship on October seventeenth. Zoe will compete in the Minnesota State Tennis Tournament this week.
Fair Oaks, Oakview, and Palmer Lake Elementary schools received $500 Game On Grants from Action for Healthy Kids to help expand student access to physical activity and healthy foods in school. Fair Oaks, Oakview, and Palmer Lake are among twenty-three schools in Minnesota to receive Game On Grants this year.
The Maple Grove Senior High Boys and Girls Soccer Teams won their respective section championships on October seventeenth. The girls defeated Centennial three to zero, and the boys were victorious against St. Cloud Tech three to one to advance to the state tournament. In the category of contributing to community, members of the National Honor Society at Osseo Senior High recently volunteered at Feed My Starving Children. During their volunteer shift, students packed sixteen thousand two hundred meals, enough to feed forty-four kids for an entire year.
A slight chill in the air didn't stop students at Elm Creek Elementary from participating in Walk to School Day on October fourth. Sponsored by the Minnesota Safe Routes to School, the event provided students and families with an opportunity to increase their physical activity and connect with friends, classmates, and neighbors. At school, students were welcomed by Principal Beth Ness and Osseo Mayor Dwayne Poppy.
As part of the annual Osseo Reads tradition, Osseo Senior High students passed out bookmarks to elementary students throughout the district on October eighteenth. This event serves to inspire our district's youngest scholars to develop a love for reading.
In the category of lifelong learning, students at Zane Wood Community School and Fernbrook Elementary participated in cardboard challenge events earlier this month. These events give students the opportunity to hone their inner engineer and artist, allowing them freedom to let their creativity soar. From robots to animals to cardboard computers, there were some ingenious designs on display at both schools. Fair Oaks Elementary students celebrated Farm to School Month by participating in the Great Lakes' Great Apple Church Crunch on October twelve. The event takes place across the upper Midwest and seeks to promote the region's apple orchards, celebrate healthy eating, and connect rural and urban communities.
Under the category of mission-driven employees, Philip Luoma Anderson, a teacher at Maple Grove Middle School, had a special opportunity to meet the president of Finland at Fin Fest in Minneapolis last month. Anderson gave the president a photograph of his homestead that his great-grandfather established after emigrating from Finland.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
I'd like to modify the current agenda and move on to the consent agenda.
All right, there's a motion to modify the agenda, to move us to item nine on the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. With that, the agenda is amended. We will move on to the consent agenda. Board members before you tonight is the consent agenda. Are there any modifications or changes to the agenda or any items that you'd like to remove for separate consideration? Hearing none, I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. With that, the consent agenda is accepted on a vote of five to zero. With that, I would make a motion to amend the agenda to move us to announcements. Action items, okay. Do you need clarification?
Announcements.
We want to move to announcements, okay. So with that, I would, can I take a vote on that? I move that we go to announcements. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, with that, we would move to announcements. A negotiations strategies meeting will be held on Tuesday, October twenty-fourth, 2017, at 7:00 PM in Room N-ten at the Educational Service Center. This meeting will be closed to the public. A policy committee meeting will be held on Monday, October thirtieth, 2017, at 6:00 PM in the forum room at the ESC. This meeting will be open to the public. A school board work session will be held on Monday, October thirtieth, 2017. Actually, I, let me take that back. This meeting has been canceled, so skip the October thirtieth meeting. A school board work session will be held on Tuesday, November fourteenth, 2017, at 6:00 PM in the forum room at the ESC. The topics will be budget planning for fiscal year 2019, tax levy for taxes payable 2018, preliminary enrollment information, and superintendent search. This meeting will be open to the public. A school board work session will be held on Thursday, November sixteenth, 2017, at 6:00 PM in the forum room at the ESC. The topic will be superintendent search. This meeting will be open to the public. A policy committee meeting will be held on Monday, November twentieth, 2017, November twentieth, 2017, at 6:00 PM in the forum room at the ESC. This meeting will be open to the public. A school board work session will be held Monday, November twentieth, 2017, at 7:00 PM in the boardroom at the ESC. The topic will be superintendent search. This meeting will be open to the public. A regular school board meeting will be held on Tuesday, November twenty-first, 2017, at 6:00 PM in the boardroom at the ESC. This meeting will be open to the public. And a negotiations meeting will be held on Tuesday, November twenty-first, 2017, at 7:00 PM in Room N-ten at the ESC. This meeting will be closed to the public. With that brings us to the end of our agenda. I would move that we adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Director Craig. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. And with that, we are adjourned. Good evening, everyone.